Hey, welcome to the former school directors for our district.
We'll start off with roll call, please.
Mr. Foose?
Here.
Ms. Nyman?
Here.
Mr. Breeze?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mrs. You Savage?
Here.
Mrs. Denon?
Here.
Mr. Boyer?
Here.
Ms. Duroff?
Here.
Mr. Alsier?
Here.
Okay, now we have a pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of silence, please.
(inaudible) coordination under God and the visual.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we now have a welcome by Mrs. Stephanie Landis, the principal here at Middle School West.
Good evening, welcome to our school board members, administration, and guests. I'd like to thank you all for your support this school year and just share with you a little bit about some of the amazing things that our staff and our students are doing here at Middle School West this year. Our staff go above and beyond to work with our students not only on academics but also their social and emotional development. And just like to highlight a few things that have been happening here at West this year. Once again, we have our school counselors and our teachers working with our students in our Road to Success and advisory classes to help our students learn the skills that they need for life. They work with the Seven Habits of Highly Effective Teens in their advisory classes and learn how to apply those concepts to their own lives. Our student council has been very active already this year. We held our first social about a week ago and the students had a great time at that and we had a fantastic turnout. And our clubs are doing some really incredible things and I just wanted to mention a few of them for you this evening. Our What's Up West, if you don't follow them, our What's Up West is our student group led by one of our teachers, Mr. Kalida, and they share some highlights of things happening around our school on our school Instagram page and our Twitter. And this week they're doing something special and unique that we're really excited about. We have invited some of the residents from Chestnut Knoll to come here to Middle School West this week and they are going to be meeting with our students in What's Up West. They have a collaborative project they're going to be working on together, so if you follow us on Twitter or Instagram, you'll be able to see some of the things that they are putting together for that. And then some of our other clubs are going to be interacting with the residents when they're here as well. Our Community Artists Club is going to be doing some things with the residents as well as our Spirit Club is putting together some snacks and activities and making cards for the residents as well. So we're excited to have our students engaged with the community in ways such as that. Our SAD club is taking the lead this week. This is Red Ribbon Week across the country where we have activities to help our students learn about making safe and healthy choices and particularly avoiding the dangers of drugs and alcohol. So our SAD club put together a bulletin board as well as announcements that will be on the TV news throughout the next week for our students. And our What's So Cool About Manufacturing is a club that we had last year and they had done extremely well and shared their video that they did in the county competition and we will be participating in that again this year. And our students will be going out in the next few weeks to Appealing Fruit, which is the company that they've been paired with this year. They're going to be creating their own video for that business and entering it in the county competition. And then the final thing I'd like to highlight for you is our TSA. You're going to be hearing a little bit more about TSA in just a little bit as we highlight some of the things that East, West, and the high school are doing. But our TSA is part of a really special project that we did not only here at West but across the district this fall. As I'm sure you're all aware, we had a Pine Forge student, Preston Dre, who passed away this past summer in a flood. The multi-service and our community really stepped up and did some amazing things in his memory. And we wanted to do something as a school district as well to recognize and honor him within our policies and to highlight some ways that his memory can help the students in our district. So we had a little lending library that our TSA club had built last year. And Mr. Rigner, one of our tech ed teachers and our TSA advisor here, had worked with a student. If you look at the screen there, you can see a picture of the original library that the students built last year in the spring. And their project board for that original library is out in the lobby if you get a chance to look at it this evening. Mr. Rigner got the help of some community members and some West parents who came out to Ironstone Park, which is also in Pine Forge, and they put in the post and the students who helped to create the library came out to help install it back in the spring. It was a great thing to add to the Pine Forge community and unfortunately, in the same flood that took Preston's life and the life of his mother and sister, our little lending library was swept away in that same flood. Mr. Rigner, our advisor for TSA, actually recovered the original doors from the creek in the weeks following the flood. And there's a picture of the original door there from the original lending library that they had created. So what we had thought would be a touching thing to do in Preston's memory and a meaningful thing to do would be to rebuild that little lending library in Preston's memory, put it back in Ironstone Park so that the Pine Forge community can continue to enjoy that and we can continue to encourage literacy for our students who live in that area of the school district. And then we also did a district-wide book collection of children's books. And you can see on the stage over here, we have the collections that we have received over the past few weeks. We involved students and families from across the district in our book collection and deliveries came in from all the other schools in the district over the past few weeks. I just have a few pictures there that show some of the collections that were brought into us. And then Mr. Rigner and our TSA worked to rebuild the library. They are the original doors from the old library that you see on there in that picture. And our Spirit Club here at West helped to sort the book collection, so they came down during their 10th period clubs and helped to separate out the chapter books and the picture books and so on so that we can share those. The books that do not fit in the little lending library, because as you can see, we got way more than that, which is what we were hoping for, the additional books that don't fit in the little lending library are going to be donated to the classrooms at Pine Forge Elementary School to help grow the classroom libraries there in their school. So they will be delivered over to Pine Forge tomorrow so that the teachers in that building can go through them and help to self-select the ones that they think will be best for their current classrooms. So thank you to the school district community, thank you to our West students and our West staff for really spearheading this effort and doing something so meaningful. This really kind of shows what we like to do with our students and what we hope our students really come away from middle school with, and that is a sense of community and a sense of purpose in everything they do. So thank you very much.
Okay, next, we have a previous executive session. Personnel tonight was 30 minutes. And now we move to special recognition. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Bennett.
Mr. President and board members, we'd like to take this opportunity to first and foremost thank and recognize all of our teachers and staff that are joining us tonight. We want to proudly announce that Bash Senior Amy Toscano has been recognized as a National Merit semifinalist in the 65th Annual National Merit Scholarship Program. Amy was among more than 1.5 million students who entered the 2020 competition by taking the 2018 preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship qualifying test. As a semifinalist, Amy scored in the top 1% nationwide. Amy played soccer for the high school, which is why she couldn't join us at a previous meeting, because they're still playing. I believe it was 13-1 at one point, one of the matches I went to, so they have a stellar She's a part of Westmont Premier. She also runs track for Bash. In addition, Amy is a member of the FBLA Math Team, National Honor Society, Academic Challenge, and she volunteers at Healthy Kids Running Series and is a math tutor. After high school, she plans to attend Brenmark College, or RPI, to earn a bachelor's degree in chemistry and physics. She aspires to one day earn her PhD in quantum chemistry. She...I don't even know how to begin to think like that. She wants to study things like quirks, string theory, the Bose-Einstein condensant, and singularities. When not playing soccer or doing homework, you can find her either reading, spending time outdoors with her family, refereeing intramural soccer games, or volunteering with Top Soccer, a program to help disabled kids play soccer. And I say students with disabilities play soccer. At this time, we'd like to ask Amy to come forward. Is she here today? Yes, and say congratulations. Last minute, a addition to our recognition tonight is that we'd like to take this opportunity to recognize one of the board members' colleagues. The Boyertown Area School District would like to present a certificate of recognition to Ms. Jill Denon, who was recently recognized by PSBA as an Alwine Society inductee in recognition of her outstanding leadership and advocacy efforts on behalf of public schools and students in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. We're coming to you. Stay by your seat. And next, the Boyertown Area School District has had Technology Student Association chapters since 1987. Since that time, the tech ed teachers have volunteered and donated their time to Boyertown students so they can benefit from leadership and technology skills developed through the program. Many Boyertown students have gone on to become business owners, engineers, technicians, teachers, and leaders in the business world. They're employed at companies such as Lockheed Martin, Boeing, NBC Universal, and Capital One, just to name a few. TSA students from Boyertown have gone to colleges such as Penn State, University of Pittsburgh, University of Penn, Temple University, Georgetown University, Rochester Institute of Technology, Boston University, and Virginia Tech. We have also had students go to the Career and Technical Center, participate in the Skills USA program and win at the national level. Our students perform as well as the CTC and quickly gain employment by using their technical skills, leadership skills, and work ethic toward developed as a TSA member. During the 2018-2019 school year, our Boyertown High School chapter earned significant recognition across regional, state, and national competitions. We would like to highlight just a few. Mr. Joshua Pennington was named the best high school TSA advisor. Is Josh here? Our TSA was awarded the American Cancer Society Spirit of Service Award for breaking the all-time TSA record for donations with $11,000 donated in a single school year. Finally, our officer team and advisor teams were nominated and awarded for first place in the LEAP Legacy Chapter, awarded to the World's Best TSA Chapter of 2019. They were also awarded a $1,000 first place prize. This is made even more impressive because those organizations do not receive, this organization does not receive district funding. The Boyertown Area School District is proud to recognize our four outstanding Technology Student Associations. The Boyertown Middle School East TSA, the advisor, Mr. Todd Kennedy. You can stand if you're here. Boyertown Middle School West TSA advisor, Mr. Kevin Rigner. Boyertown Freshman Academy TSA, Mr. Andrew Schof. Boyertown High School TSA, of course, Mr. Joshua Pennington, advisor. (applause) Would you gentlemen please come forward?
Okay, next up is public comment period number one, and I'm told no one has signed up. Next up is approval of the minutes of our meeting of September 24. Okay, Mrs. Duroff moves, second, Mr. Lewis. Any questions or comments on the minutes of that meeting? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Foose?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Breeze?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. You Savage?
Yes.
Mrs. Denon?
Yes.
Mr. Boyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Duroff?
Yes.
Mr. Alsier?
Yes.
Nine zero.
Okay, next up is the report of the president. So I just have a few things here. We've gotten a couple questions lately concerning the potential closing of Pine Forge, so I just wanted to take a couple minutes here and reiterate a couple things on that situation. One, the potential closing of any school is clearly a difficult decision and it's one that the board is taking very seriously. And I just want to make a couple points. Closing a school does not mean, or looking at closing a school does not mean that that school is not a good school. It does not mean that there is no teaching or learning going on in that school. Quite candidly, it comes down to primarily a financial decision. And part of that financial decision are some facts as they lay out. One is, it is becoming increasingly difficult to operate a school of 300 or less students. In this case, the school is down to just over 200 students. And the business model in the state of Pennsylvania, the way education is laid out and funded, it's become increasingly more difficult. There's been some questions as well that I just want to cover, but first, some other facts. Pine Forge is definitely the oldest building in our district. It's also the most remote building. It's also known that there is little or no growth on the west side of the district, and this has been going on for several years. One of the questions that's come up is the capital expense that would be needed. And that is projected, and this has been presented in the hearing and in some community forums, of 1.8 million to possibly 8 million, depending on what the board would want to do, in the event it was decided to keep the school open. The 1.8 is kind of considered a minimum for some functional needed and necessary upgrades. Another question that's come at recently is the whole piece about class size and what that would do as far as, what would happen with class size. And I would just say, you know, it would be great if we had a class size of students throughout the district of 15 or less students per class. Again, quite candidly, not affordable. We would need numerous more teachers and classrooms in order to accomplish that. And 15 seems to be the number because based on all the research that's been shown, when you get to a class size under 15, that's where class size can make a difference from all the research that I've seen and that's out there. Some of the more compelling factors on student achievement are the economic status of the family that that student comes from. Another factor, major factor, is the educational level of the mom or the mother of that family of those students. And of course, the teacher. The teacher in the classroom can make all the difference, as I think people know. When you look at the two major factors of this potential closing, one is the students, and there's about 200 affected. We know that the bus time will be in, within, any new bus routes, the bus time on the bus, I'll call it, would be within the guidelines of our district. And I'm very confident that with our administrators and teachers in our district, that our students would be taken care of. We have professional people, well-trained, this is what they do and what they're good at, taking care of our students and teaching and learning. Financially, you know, we'll be able to see a closer look shortly in the budget for next year as well, so more to come on that. So anyway, I just wanted to kind of cover those two items because we've gotten some questions on that recently. So with that, I'm going to turn it over for our financial reports.
Okay, tonight we'll be looking at the treasurer's report for the month of September, and I'm going to just highlight a few items on the sheet with the revenues and expenditures. In the month of September, we took in approximately $25.6 million in local revenues, and the vast majority of that was from our real estate taxes, tax collections, $24.6 million. And August is the end of the discount period, and we know that the vast number of taxpayers pay their taxes in the discount period, but because of timing when the tax collectors receive their collections and then are able to remit them to us, we do receive quite a large portion of that in the month of September as well. We also took in approximately $658,000 in earned income taxes. In the state, we took in almost $600,000, and the majority of that was our special ed subsidy. And if you look under the federal sources, it looks like we had a negative collection, but that was just an accounting entry because at the end, I'm finished with the work for the auditors for the 18, 19 year, and that was just because we had to accrue some federal Title I and Title II revenues, and then they had to be reversed in the new year. So don't worry, we're not really getting negative revenues, that's just because of an accounting entry that we had to make. And as always, under the expenditures, salaries and benefits are by far the vast largest portion of our almost $11 million of expenditures in the month of September. $6.5 million was in our salaries and benefits. And we also had debt service payments that were due October 1st, so those were paid at the very end of the month of September. And that concludes my report.
Okay, looking for a motion to approve the treasurer's report. Mrs. Denon, a second. Mrs. You Savage, questions or comments on the treasurer's report? Okay, seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
No.
Mr. Breeze?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. You Savage?
Yes.
Mrs. Denon?
Yes.
Mr. Boyer?
Yes.
Ms. Duroff?
Yes.
Mr. Alsier?
Yes.
Eight one.
Okay, next up is the secretary's report.
Oh, not yet. But I don't have anything.
Okay. Solicitor's report. No report. Okay, we now have our student representatives' report to the board and the community.
Good evening, everyone. The Powder Puff Football Game will be held on November 4th this year in the stadium. The senior and junior girls will be playing flag football and the boys will be cheerleading. All the proceeds from this event will be donated to the Four Diamonds Pediatric Cancer Fund.
On the 10th of October, Bash's SAD club held its first annual Green Out Day, celebrating world mental health awareness. Students wore bracelets with the messages, "Mental Health Matters and You Are Not Alone." The bracelets were provided by the SAD club to every student in the building.
Mama Mia is set to be this year's grand musical at Bash. Tickets will be sold soon.
There's a new collaboration between the class officers and the student council to start a battle of the classes at the high school, where students earn points for participation in school events like football games, school dances, and other social events. The class earning the most points at the end of the year will be deemed the winner. This new point method has been devised to increase school participation and school spirit at the high school. Last week, Bash concluded its homecoming festivals. The dance was the largest in school history with over 800 participants. Ryan Fosky was crowned homecoming king and Alexa Walter was crowned queen.
Congratulations to both girls and boys soccer for winning PAC finals. Also, congratulations to cross-country at PACs. Morgan Yannick placed 21st, earning all PAC honors. Congratulations to Eric Mothersbaugh for taking 11th place, John Black for getting 9th place, and Christian McCombe for getting 2nd place. Thank you and have a good night.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions for our student reps? All right, thank you so much. All right, next up we have the superintendent's report, starting with our consent agenda. All right, next up, we have the superintendent's report, starting with our consent agenda.
Mr. President, board members, we have three items for the consent agenda. Item number A is the second reading and approval of Policies 008, organizational chart, Policy 101, the revised and updated mission statement, Policy 209, health examinations and screenings, Policy 209.2, diabetes management in schools, and Policy 210.1, possession administration of asthma inhalers and epinephrine auto-injectors. Item B for consent agenda is ratification of the 2019-2020 school district calendar change. We're asking that the board ratify the change to the 2019-2020 school calendar, making the November 5th an early dismissal day for all students in order for an additional half day of professional learning for our faculty associated with trauma and SEL. And item number C is overnight trips. The board's practices approve and ratify trips taken by students that require overnight trips. Trip one is the purpose of the trip is for the 12 Bash TSA students to travel to Harrisburg on November 3rd through the 4th. The registration per student is $910. The total non-district expense is $910, covered from another source for their trip. Trip number two is a trip of 38 FBI La students to travel to Hershey, PA from April 6th through the 8th to compete in the state-level FBI La events. The non-district expense per student, registration is $500. The total non-district expense is $500. Item C is the purpose of the trip is for 65 Bash music students to travel to Hartford, Connecticut, and Boston, Massachusetts on April 17th through the 20th to participate in the performances and clinics. Teacher in charge will be Chris Sinclair. The transportation cost is 125, housing 150, meals $100, other items and substitutes $75. The total expense is $450, and is a non-district expense. At this time, the administration recommends to the board of school directors to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, looking for a motion. Mr. Breeze, second. Mr. Lewis, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Foose?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Breeze?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. You Savage?
Yes.
Mrs. Dennen?
Yes.
Mr. Boyer?
Yes.
Ms. Duroff?
Yes.
Mr. Elsier?
Yes.
Motion passes nine zero.
Mr. President, we'd like to move on to the itemized agenda. Item A is appointment of the board secretary, as you heard earlier, not yet by Ms. Carol Pitts. We are requesting that the board of school directors approve the appointment of Carol Pitts as the board secretary, effective October 22nd, 2019. The remainder of this fiscal year left in her capacity as chief financial officer, and to retain her in that position until any further recommendations come from the administration from 2022 to 2023 fiscal year. So this time, we're requesting the board to approve the appointment of Ms. Carol Pitts as the board secretary.
Okay, Mr. Breeze, Mrs. You Savage, seconds. Questions or comments on the board secretary motion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Foose?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Breeze?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. You Savage?
Yes.
Mrs. Dennen?
Yes.
Mr. Boyer?
Yes.
Ms. Duroff?
Yes.
Mr. Elsier?
Yes.
Motion passes nine zero.
Item number B, and I pardon if I say the last name wrong, approval of the Joseph B. Soupek Swing Away Scholarship Award. The Berks County Juvenile Probation Office would like to establish a scholarship in memory of Joseph, a 2005 Bash graduate who passed away in August 2018. The high school would like to set up a memorial scholarship in, I see the error that Mrs. You Savage was pointing out. It has double content. Joseph was a juvenile probation officer for the county of Berks. The source of revenue would be from the fundraising events conducted by the Berks County Juvenile Probation Office. A yearly scholarship of $500 will be given to a graduating senior that meets the following criteria: being involved in athletics at varsity level, 3.0 GPA during the school year, community involvement not limited to, but including community service clubs, volunteer associations, seeking to further their education in post-graduation, and ideally having an interest in criminal justice. At this time, we'd like to recommend the board approves and authorizes establishment of the Joseph Soupek Swing Away Scholarship Award.
Okay, Mrs. Duroff moves, second. Ms. Nyman, questions or comments on the scholarship? Okay, seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Foose?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Breeze?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. You Savage?
Yes.
Mrs. Dennen?
Yes.
Mr. Boyer?
Yes.
Ms. Duroff?
Yes.
Mr. Elsier?
Yes.
Motion passes nine zero.
Item C is the Adam Project Change Order with Hurson Electric. At this time, we'd like to recommend that the board of school directors approves a change order EC-001 for Adam Project for Hurson Electric, Inc. That change order results in a total reduction in costs of $10,971.50.
Okay, Mrs. Duroff moves, second. Mr. Foose, questions or comments on the reduction of $10,000-plus dollars? Ms. Nyman?
Is this for the high school project or?
The Adam Project, aka the stadium. Okay, roll call vote, please. Oh, Mr. Lewis, okay. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Foose?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Breeze?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. You Savage?
Yes.
Mrs. Dennen?
Yes.
Mr. Boyer?
Yes.
Ms. Duroff?
Yes.
Mr. Elsier?
Yes.
Motion passes nine zero.
Item D, another good thing, the approval of the receipt of the Pennsylvania Department of Education Bureau Special Education 2019-2020 Competitive Integrated Employment Grant. Ms. Stacy Thierry submitted an application and was approved to receive PDE's Bureau of Special Education Competitive Integrated Employment Grant in an amount of $14,409.50. The grant is to support the Integrated Career Development Program for the transition from school to community-based employment for the district's special education students. We are recommending the approval and acceptance of this grant award by the board of school directors.
Okay, Mrs. You Savage moves, Ms. Nyman, second. Questions or comments on the grant? Mrs. Dennen?
Yes, I just want to congratulate Mrs. Thierry on getting this grant and doing all the work to apply for the grants. We do not employ a grant writer, per se, for our district, so it is upon our administrators and our teachers to take it upon themselves to apply for grants. And I had the opportunity to go to, over to the high school and look at all the great work that her, that the program that she runs, getting our special education students out into the workforce. And we're doing some really, really great work at that level at the high school. And I think it's just, it's just so important because this, these kids are learning valuable life skills and employment skills, so they will be able to contribute to society in the workforce and live on their own. So I just want to congratulate her for this and commend her for taking the time and putting so much effort into the program over at the high school.
Okay, Mr. Foose?
I think it's a great achievement that they, that they received this grant. And if you're not already following the BEST program on Facebook, they have a, they do a great job of documenting a lot of the work that's getting done. Looks like the students and the staff are having a really good time, and you can also track some of the different businesses that they get to work at, and some of the different community involvement that they, that they get as a part of this program. So really great all around, and happy for them that they were able to achieve this.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Foose?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Breeze?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. You Savage?
Yes.
Mrs. Dennen?
Yes.
Mr. Boyer?
Yes.
Ms. Duroff?
Yes.
Mr. Elsier?
Yes.
Motion passes nine zero.
Item E is approval of the Montgomery County Drug and Alcohol Prevention Project Initiative Grant. The Montgomery County Drug and Alcohol Prevention Project is an initiative of the Montgomery County Department of Health and Human Services, Office of Drug and Alcohol. The project is being coordinated through the Family Services Department of Montgomery County. This mini-grant project is in an amount of $400, and is designed to support local groups and organizations in their drug and alcohol prevention efforts. We are recommending that the board of school directors approve the Montgomery County Drug and Alcohol Prevention Project Initiative Grant in an amount of $400.
Okay, Mrs. Duroff moves, Ms. Nyman, second. Questions or comments on, on this particular grant? Ms. Nyman?
Does Berks County have anything like this that we would be applying for?
I don't know, but I would tell you if they do, we would, but I can have Mrs. Torsha add something, answering that question in the weekly report.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Foose?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Breeze?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. You Savage?
Yes.
Mrs. Dennen?
Yes.
Mr. Boyer?
Yes.
Ms. Duroff?
Yes.
Mr. Elsier?
Yes.
Motion passes nine zero.
Item F is approval of the 2019 Journal Obligations Bonds. I believe we have bond counselor?
We do. Well, not bond counselor, Mr. Brad Remig from PFM, so. Mr. Remig's just going to give us-
Financial advisor, thank you.
-a real quick update on where we stand from the last time we, he spoke to us.
Sure. Well, it's good to see everybody again. As you may recall, last month at the finance committee and the committee meetings in September, we talked extensively about an opportunity to refinance some bonds from a higher interest rate to a lower interest rate and hopefully save some money. Right now, we're hoping to save six figures, over $100,000 is where we stand right today in terms of the net savings. Again, we're not going to extend the term of the bond, we're just going to pay it off in the same amount of time, just replace the higher rate with a lower rate and save some money. Today, we did our credit rating call, so with Carol, she did a great job in talking about what's going on here in the community, so we're going to wait to hear what they have to say about that. They're going to get a report back to us next week, and then from there, we will put the information out to potential investors, and we look to price the bonds in the early part of November, as long as we can achieve the minimum savings that the resolution specifies, which I believe is $80,000 net of expenses.
Okay, looking for a motion on the bond? Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Your CFO has a little bit of 30,000-foot information from the call.
All righty, go ahead, Mrs. Pitts.
Yes, so we did, Mr. Remig was on the call with me. There were quite a few questions from the bond rating agency, but I will say that they did primarily focus on where we're going with our fund balance, and I think that's probably one of the biggest considerations that they make when they are making our bond rating. I did let them know that where we are standing before our audit, the auditors just came in this week on Monday, and after the adjusting entries that I made, we were looking at an excess of about $1.2 million, but as we have talked about at a previous finance committee, that is one-time money because it was primarily generated by vacancies. They will take this good result into consideration, but they do, because we've had the negative outlook for about two years, they think it's time to make a decision either way. So with any luck, we will, they will affirm our bond rating and give us a stable, but it's not out of the question that they could downgrade us. And if they did downgrade us, it would be most likely that they would downgrade us and give us a stable, but it's not out of the question they would downgrade us and give us a negative outlook. So did I capture that correctly?
You did capture that, that was very well done.
Thank you.
That's exactly what, what they basically said, as Carol mentioned. They're going to make a decision on how they're going to treat you now, whether it's going to be a downgrade or affirm your rating.
And one more thing, I guess, that because of the results from the 1890 school year, that will be something that we need to discuss at the next finance committee, how we want to handle, what's the best way for us, for our school district, to handle that excess that we had last year?
Mr. President, given the briefing that I received after the call, which she shared with you all that I asked, it's going to be, I think, vitally clear and important that we work to bolster our fund balance to the liable limit. To stabilize our bond rating is one of the first key things to start solidifying. One of the things that I don't think, maybe Carol mentioned, they did note in the conversation that we use that to balance our budget. And as you know, one of the tenants we had this year going into this budget process is I was working with the team to try to slow the drain on it and get it up under $1 million, but at the end of the day, while we're able to technically use your fund balance to balance your budget, that is not truly a balanced budget when you're, depending on your savings account. So it really is something that we will have to address going forward. I would just summarize what I've always said to you all, that we have a structurally deficient budget. When I look at the years prior data that I, before I came, and what we're seeing now, each budget cycle, we're starting $3 to $4 million in the hole. And that's a challenge, because you're using, you're plugging that hole with your fund balance, and then of course, also a tax increase. So that has to be taken into account as we approach the budget season. Thank you.
Okay, back to the motion, looking for a motion and a second. Okay, Mrs. Dennen, and second, Mrs. You Savage. Questions or comments on this piece? Mrs. Duroff?
It was kind of difficult to hear up here. The money that we're saving on this, it's not determined yet what we're going to do with, correct?
Correct.
And the other thing is, are we stretching the loan out for more time?
No, we're not. We're going to pay it off in the same amount of time.
And if they downgrade us, do you have any idea what the insurance cost would be to buy ourselves out of that again?
Sure, that's a good question. Right now, we're estimating that if you were downgraded and insurance was needed to be utilized, that cost is somewhere between $12,000 and $15,000.
Okay, and the total amount now we're projecting that we're going to save?
I factor, I have been conservative in my numbers in that I just said to you it's about $100,000. That assumes we have to buy the insurance, so if we don't need to buy the insurance, we hope to see your savings go up, because then we wouldn't have to purchase it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, Ms. Nyman, and I have Mrs. Dennen in the queue.
If I heard you correct, and like it was said, it's hard to hear for some unknown reason tonight, you said that's, $100,000 is after we pay for everything. That would include your money?
That's correct.
And so it would be $100,000 in our pocket?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Dennen?
So just a clarification about the fund balance issue. It, the guideline is 8% of your budget?
8% of your expenditure, if I remember correctly.
8% of your expenditure budget in your uncommitted fund balance.
8% of your expenditure budget. So are we at this point below that?
We are.
We are below that. So, and I understand what Dr. Bennen was saying about, we don't want to ever use our fund balance to balance our budget, but if we're creeping up above that, then you almost have to, correct? Not that that's our situation at all, but I'm just, I'm just curious, if, you would want to look at your total picture, but one of the other options would be to look at whether you should be committing some fund balance as well, because the 8% limit is on your uncommitted fund balance. Okay, thank you.
All righty, no other questions or comments. What I saw was 102,000 in the paperwork that you sent over, is that accurate?
Correct, that's what we're currently projecting. Correct, that's what we're currently projecting.
Where we're at now.
We're still two weeks away.
And just to remind the board, the, what we move forward was that we're gonna save at least 80,000, so that still stands.
Correct.
Or we don't do this.
Right, correct.
Great. Okay, Mr. Foose?
I believe I've seen reports, there are no more anticipated rate cuts in this upcoming year, correct?
The Federal Reserve meets next week. Some market participants expect a rate cut from the Federal Reserve and some, I believe the market has priced some of that in, but they do anticipate, most market participants expect one more rate decrease during the course of the year. Again, the market's priced that, a portion of that in already.
So, that's, some of that is baked into this?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, no other questions or comments, roll call vote please.
Mr. Foose?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Breeze?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. You Savage?
Yes.
Mrs. Denon?
Yes.
Mr. Boyer?
Yes.
Ms. Duroff?
Yes.
Mr. Elsier?
Yes.
Motion passes nine zero.
Item G is approval of the grade configuration to include pre-K. The PA Department of Education requires grade configuration through the EDNA, which is the education directory names and addresses. The pre-K programs placement at BASH needs to be approved by the Boyertown Board of School Directors and captured in official minutes for us to have the EDNA updated. Once approved, the minutes of the meeting will be submitted to the state in order for the new grade configuration to be permitted through PIM's submission. So, the administration's recommended Board of School Directors approves the grade configuration at BASH to include pre-K programs beginning retroactive to August 26, 2019.
Okay, looking for a motion and a second on this. Okay, Mr. Breeze, second, Mr. Lewis, questions or comments on the, the pre-K piece? Ms. Nyman?
I guess my only concern is having these young children over there with our regular students. I know we had pre-K there for years, 'cause I remember my son going over there, but as times have changed, is it really advisable or should we keep them at, 'cause this is switching them from Cobradale to there, right?
As you may recall, the move has already happened, it was presented to the board. What we didn't do was capture it in the minutes, so we got a thumbs up in the reconfiguration. They've been there since August, so we can't-
I'm just concerned.
I can duly note your concern, but for us to have these students in the registry show up, we have to, we inform, we have to have this showing up in the minutes as an official action taken by the board. So, we have to have this done to recognize that that program is sitting at that building right now.
Okay, Mr. Breeze, you're in the queue.
Yes, thank you. Can you, the cost again, to the community?
There's nothing.
So, there's no cost?
Not this action, no, it's, they're already there, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call vote please.
Mr. Foose?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Breeze?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. You Savage?
Yes.
Mrs. Denon?
Yes.
Mr. Boyer?
Yes.
Ms. Duroff?
Yes.
Mr. Elsier?
Yes.
Motion passes nine zero.
Item H is personnel action, resignations. We have two classified administration, we have one appointment. At this time, we'd like to recognize one administrative appointment, replacing Ms. Carol Pitts in her old role. We would like to welcome Mr. Lamar Hayes as the new Director of Business Services. Mr. Hayes is joining us from Norristown Area School District, where he's worked in their business office since 2008. Prior to that, he was with the Pennsylvania Treasury Department as an auditor and then for two years, and prior to that, he worked five years as a principal back office specialist, and then prior to that, he was working as a financial advisor in the private sector also. Mr. Hayes has a Bachelor of Science in Finance from Temple University and his Masters of Science specifically in school business leadership, which is a program that's endorsed by PASBO in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. So, at this time, I don't know if he's, the board members should have met him, but if he's still sitting here, Mr. Hayes is over there, if you can wave your hand, so welcome. We have the addition of one professional staff, nine classified staff, four, excuse me, six substitutes, three Title I support specialists, then change in employment status. We have three professional staff, two classified. For FMLA, we have requests for FMLA, leave of absences, 10 professional staff and one classified staff. Additionally, we have appointment of two mentor teachers. At this time, the administration recommend, the board approves the aforementioned personnel items.
Okay, looking for a motion and a second, Mrs. You Savage moves, Mrs. Denon seconds. Questions or comments on the personnel items? Okay, seeing none, roll call vote please.
Mr. Foose?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Breeze?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. You Savage?
Yes.
Mrs. Denon?
Yes.
Mr. Boyer?
Yes.
Ms. Duroff?
Yes.
Mr. Elsier?
Yes.
Motion passes nine zero.
The last board meeting, the board members received a update on the PSBA compensation study. Item number A is requesting approval of a compensation rate change for our staff nurses. In that study, the board was provided nine support staff compensable factors that we must consider in making decisions with regards to compensation for our staff. In particular, for the school nurse services, the Pennsylvania School Code requires that school-aged children shall be provided school nurse services. Not adequately providing student school health service has legal, financial, and potentially compensatory education implications. The recommendation is intended to retain and attract staff nurses to align with the midpoint of the market pay as identified in the Pennsylvania School Board Association Compensation Study. Because of this compensation study and the legal, financial, and potential compensatory education implications, we are recommending that all nurses' compensation be, if they are not at that point, be changed to the midpoint of the scale of 2550 per hour. The nurses, as you know, represent a high degree of base job knowledge requirement, have a frequency of contacts with students, a responsibility for the welfare of others, they deal with confidential data, they have a significant effect, there's a significant issue if they make errors, they must demonstrate independent judgment, it requires mental and visual effort, analytical demands, and supervision not while of people, but of the administration of medication. So, in the PSBA study, they actually hit almost every last one of the areas that are compensable factors. This recommendation is not intended to say any one group is more important, this is taken because of the implications with legal, financial, and compensatory education issues.
Okay, looking for a motion and a second on the nurses, okay, Mr. Lewis, second, Mr. Foose, questions on this piece? Ms. Nyman?
I know I missed the meeting, but how is this gonna fit into our budget?
In your weekly report and discussed last week, this fits within either what we will have identified from our, what do you call the count?
The, the budgetary reserve?
Budgetary reserve, so it still stays within our budgetary expenditures, which we can't exceed.
Any other questions? I know we discussed this at length at the last, at our workshop meeting. Okay, seeing none, roll call vote please.
Mr. Foose?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Breeze?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. You Savage?
Yes.
Mrs. Denon?
Yes.
Mr. Boyer?
Yes.
Ms. Duroff?
Yes.
Mr. Elsier?
Yes.
Motion passes nine zero.
And I do wanna note for the board that HR has already began working directly with PSBA to move forward with a plan that we will include in the budgetary process to address what they presented to you as trying to address any internal equity issues and external competitiveness issues. Dr. Brecklin has already sent some information to Dr. Kim to start including in that process and will be brought forward again to present to the board in tandem with administration to consider how we can address the disparities that exist within the compensation plan for support staff. It's whether it be a multi-year process or shorter, they, that'll be provided to the board to make the determination as part of budgetary process for next year. Item number J is an item being brought forward because of its significant impact on the culture and climate and teaching and learning within our schools. We are asking for the approval to adjust the compensation rate for our building substitute teachers. Originally, the board received a complete presentation on addressing a compensation for our building subs and our per diem subs and also potentially guest teachers. At this time, given that we were going through the audit process and the transition with CFOs, that because we could not get a solid number at the time to move forward with entire plan, to make sure that we are doing something that stays within our budgetary allotment and our expenditure, approved expenditures by the board, we only bring it forward to you in consultation with the principals, a compensation rate increase to attract and retain more building substitute teachers. You know that each building will now be giving a building sub based on FTE allotment, so not everybody will get the same, it'll be the size of the building, 'cause you have more teachers to replace. So, to attract more candidates and retain the current substitute teachers, administration recommends increasing the compensation rate for our building substitute teachers. While the now, the financial analysis of increased compensation is being reviewed based on the feedback from building principals, we made the determination to only move forward on this increase for building subs, which will be at a rate of $135 per day for the first 30 workdays in the district. After the 30 workdays increase will go to $145 per day, and then after 60 workdays in the district, they will be paid at a rate of $155 per day.
Okay, looking for a motion and a second on this piece, Mrs. You Savage, second, Mr. Breeze. So, again, just to remind the board, we discussed this at length at our workshop meeting. So, I see Mrs. Denon and Mrs. Duroff in the queue.
Yes, I know we did discuss this at length, but I just wanted to reiterate that it is clearly a supply and demand issue, and I was, just when I was at the PSBA conference, they threw out a new statistic that they're projected for this year to have teaching certificates be 60% lower than what they were in the past. So, that's a huge number, and again, this is not the fault of any, of anyone, it's the, it's the fact that we don't have enough people going into the teaching profession. And so, it's a systemic problem, and I think the only, the only way that, that we can address this problem in the, in the short term is to increase the pay of our substitutes and be more competitive with our surrounding districts.
Okay, Mrs. Duroff?
I just had a question on the building subs. Aren't they hired for the year?
It's Dr. Kim, so I wanna make sure.
They seem to have the same-
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear the question.
I believe she asked if the building subs, are they hired for the year?
Typically, historically, we did not have them start in September, usually it's until they started in October and goes and went till the end of the year, so it's not quite the full school year.
So, they're typically, she said, employed starting in October and finish out the remainder of the school year. So, they don't start in August, they typically start in October, she said, and then go through the end of the school year.
Just this year or is that only somebody?
I'm sorry?
She said, is that just this year or has it always been done that way?
It has always been, well, so, I think the building sub actually started, I wanna say probably starting last year, to my recollection. So, it's the first time and they have not worked, last year, they didn't do, they worked nine months and they're doing it for nine months as well this year. And if that needs to change, we'll just take a look at that for the subsequent years.
Is it nine months where the teacher works?
Teachers are scheduled for 10 months.
She said, the question was, are teachers scheduled for nine months? Dr. Kim said teachers work 10 months in the year.
Okay, any other questions on the building subs? Okay, seeing none, roll call vote please.
Mr. Foose?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Breeze?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. You Savage?
Yes.
Mrs. Denon?
Yes.
Mr. Boyer?
Yes.
Ms., I'm sorry, Ms. Duroff?
Yes.
Mr. Elsier?
Yes.
Motion passes nine zero.
Okay, that concludes the superintendent's report, we move right into old business, and I'm sensing there's no old business. So, now, I don't know if someone's there, public comment period number two, I'm getting the sign that no one has signed up, so we can now move into board comments and then into announcements. Any board comments? Mrs. Denon?
Yes, I just wanted to mention that I did attend as the delegate, the PSBA conference, and it was really, it was very good this year, the speakers were very, very informative and there were a lot of learning modules, the ones, some of the specific ones were the effect on the William Penn lawsuit on educational funding, and they did, as they do every year, an education for school board members on what it means to be a, have transgender students in your school and a legal update on that issue. Dr. Brett Cooper was actually in that session and speaking on behalf of Boyertown when he was the principal of Boyertown, he is now the superintendent of Daniel Boone. And another session that really stood out to me was Upper St. Clair had a session on how to have innovative curriculum in your school district and really neat programs that school districts can have built into their curriculum and innovative ways to do it, especially if you don't have a lot of funding in your budget, and the process to bring that to your district, working with your curriculum directors, your school boards, and your community. So, overall, I thought it was, it was a very wealth, very, very worthwhile conference and the keynote speakers and some of the speakers that they brought in, it, they were very educational, so I just wanted to share that with the board.
Okay, before I, I think, Mr. Foose, you're in the queue, before I was just given a sign that Dr. Kim has maybe-
Clarification.
An adjustment?
A clarification. So, we consider our teachers to be 10-month employees, but if you count the days, actually it is less than 10 months. They start end of August and they go typically to the first week of June, so we consider them to 10 months, but it is actually less than 10 months, Mrs. Duroff, just for clarification.
Okay, Mr. Foose?
First thing I wanted to highlight was in the consent agenda, I believe we approved the change to the calendar, so that was, we did give some advance notice of that, but I, I assume additional communication will go out now that it's officially been ratified?
Yes, if you remember the discussion, we got the initial go-ahead, we gave, went out soft communication, and now we'll be sending out more communication with official communication. But the reason we brought it to you, what we did, was because we wanted to give parents as much notice as possible with impending, based on your feedback that you would approve it going forward. So it did go out originally, and it'll be going out now, much more hard communication with the change in official calendar.
Thank you for that. And then I also wanted to highlight Ms. Pitts being put in the role of Secretary going forward. I appreciate the work she's done thus far, and I just wanted to say during the exchange between her and Mr. Ramek, I had a sense of confidence in the way that she presents not only the data, but the, kind of the process of things as well. So I just wanted to say that I appreciate the, the work you've been doing so far, and also, you've certainly created some big shoes to fill, and I welcome Mr. Hayes to the district. I'm sure he can learn quite a bit from you, and hopefully, he does, does great things as a new member of the district administration.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Mrs. Duroff?
Yes, I was wondering, I was looking for some information on the website, and I couldn't find the CAFER listed on there, and I couldn't find some other current information.
Okay, so for the 1718 school year, the CAFER was not done, it was done as an annual financial report, and we decided at this point that the work that would be required to go into a CAFER for 1718 wouldn't be justified, because 1718 is done. So it really is my hope to be able to do a CAFER for 1819, and it really, it's just the basic financial statements like we've always done, but it has the addition of the statistical section, which is good information, I think it's excellent information to share with our community. And Dr. Ben and I have talked about this in the past, really, it is my goal to have it for 1819, but this is a transition period, so we're going to shoot for that.
So we don't have to do one?
No, the CAFER is not required. That is above and beyond what, what is required. So what we do have on our, our website right now is the annual financial report, which is the audited financial statements, which is what is required. And not all school districts do CAFERs. CAFER is definitely an excellent thing to do, but not required.
Where do I find that?
Find the CAFER, or the, or the AFR. Okay, so if you go onto the district website, I believe you look under Departments, and then you choose Business Office, or Business and Finance, I can't remember the exact title. And then on the left side of the screen, it will say Financial Reports, and it will be in there. And if you have any questions, just give me a call, I can walk you through. Thanks.
Okay, Mrs. You Savage, and I see Mr. Boyer's hand in the queue.
Hi. I wanted to acknowledge both of our board members who attended the PSBA conference, Mrs. Denon and her award that we learned about tonight, and Mr. Rod Boyer, for taking the time out of their personal lives and learning, and coming back and sharing with us. I look forward to hearing more from both of you. That's great, and thanks for the update that you gave, Mrs. Denon. I also wanted to acknowledge the Board's progress in two areas. One, in working with administration, with great leadership from administration on our mission, vision, and goals. So we finalized that through policy tonight, and that is so important to guide our work and keep us focused. The other item was, at the last meeting, we adopted the PSB principles for governance and leadership through policy as well. So that also is so important. The way that we work together impacts how much we get done, but it also impacts student performance. The Board, all, every one of us came to board training tonight and listened together to some PSBA board training on the connection between effective board governance and student outcomes. And there are studies and a lot of research that shows this, and so I just wanted to congratulate the Board on passing those two policies, and, and that, and let it, let it allow us, or allow it to guide us, please. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Boyer in the queue, and then Ms. Nyman.
Thanks very much. Last week, I had, had the opportunity and the privilege to volunteer at the high school to help make a luncheon and serve lunch to a group of students from our high school, as well as from the Pine Forge Academy. And I was thrilled to be part of that collaboration and see those students working together in a master class that was run by a professor from Penn State University. And I believe that's one of the first collaborations that we have had with Pine Forge Academy that I can remember, and I hope it continues in the future. And it was a lot of fun to serve the kids lunch, they were great, what a great bunch of kids from both schools. Secondly, I'll be serving as a volunteer for the Watchdog Dads Program this week at Cole Brookdale Elementary. It's my second time doing that, and I'm looking forward to that. It's always a lot of fun to be interacting with teachers and the students, and to, to serve as a volunteer there in that program. And now I want to go back to the PSBA conference, if I may. I attended last week out in Hershey for the PSBA State Conference at the Hershey Convention Center. Mrs. Denon, as you heard, was there, and Mrs. You Savage just mentioned that, you know, an important part of what we do is effective board governance, and it just so happens that that's one of the sessions I attended at Hershey. And sitting next to me was Dr. Cooper, one of our old friends. And it was an excellent session, I'm looking forward to reporting on the things that I learned at that session on board governance. And imagine my surprise when I was sitting in this large room at the Hershey Convention Center with representatives from Boards and their superintendents and other administrators from all over Pennsylvania, 500 school districts, and we're all sitting in there listening to this excellent presentation by the keynote speaker, and just, well, just prior to that, up on the big Fanavision screen is the name of one of our colleagues, Mrs. Denon, and she won that great award, you know, from among all the board directors in the entire state. So I think it was a proud moment for Boyertown School District, and I was thrilled. What a surprise for me to see her name on that screen, and it was, I think it was a surprise for her as well. But congratulations, Mrs. Denon, and it was an excellent conference, and I want to thank my colleagues in the school district for allowing me to attend and learn all those great things.
Okay, Ms. Nyman?
At last meeting, the September 24th meeting, Dr. Ben, you made a statement about an ad that was out there, which I was a part of, and you brought it to the table, and now I need to make some clarification to that. Out of the annual financial report, which is audited, and we pay to have it audited, our total debt service is 146 million, some odd change. So I feel I was right on that. You say you had 16 million in offsetting from PlanCon. Well, that's neither booked nor guaranteed. We have no guarantee of that money. We have no booking when it's going to come in. So you took that off of the total, and I'm sorry, our debt service is 146 million. So I kind of take offense to that, because I've lived here my entire life, and I don't need somebody coming up to me and saying, is that true? It's true, it's right here in the annual report. Now, I'll grant you, when I did my calculations, I looked at Mr. Rammix, and he had all been 148, which I thought was a little bit closer since the annual report was audited from June of 2018. So I thought Mr. Rammix was a lot more closer. Thank you.
Yes, Dr. Ben, to clarify?
Actually, I'm not going to clarify, I'm just going to make a point of notice. If you look at the video, I didn't mention anybody's name. I responded to the questions that were presented based on the ad, so I would just say this, I don't know whether you wrote it or not. Until you said you were a part of it tonight, I had no idea you were a part of it. And I'm going to say it again, you come to meetings, and you attack me in these meetings, and I never said your name when I addressed that issue. And I just want that to be noted. It's a constant reoccurring theme.
Okay, if no other comments, we move to announcements. Normally, I would say any given Tuesday, we're meeting, but we actually have the next two weeks, Tuesdays off. Our next meeting is at the Ed Center, we have two workshops on Tuesday, November 12th. With that, looking for a motion to adjourn, Mr. Breeze, second. Ms. Nyman? Meeting adjourned, thank you.